Liners, we are here for the first time in, what, three years? At least two. So it's nice to see all the faces out there. Let's see, let's open this up officially and then there'll be a few housekeeping items we need to get to before our first article. So, let me read the warning to you and we'll make it official. "The legal voters of the town of Brookline are hereby warned to meet in the multipurpose room of the former Brookline School Building in said town of Brookline on Monday, 6th of March at 6:00 PM to transact the following business from the floor." And we've got seventeen articles to go through tonight, and hopefully that will move along nice and smoothly. Let's see, I've got a bunch of things on my list here. By the way, my name, I see a number of new faces out there that I don't know, and that's great. I would encourage you, if you see somebody you don't know at some point, introduce yourself. And we have a lot of new people living here in town nowadays, and that's a good thing. So, my name is David Parker. I live up the road a little bit, with a pound out in front, up the northern end of town. I find myself here as the moderator this year. I resigned my position a couple of years ago, thinking it was probably time for somebody new to take over after almost twenty years of doing this. And somehow, there was a write-in campaign that I was unaware of. It garnered me twelve votes. I didn't even vote for myself, I voted for David Jones back there.
I got twelve other people to vote for me.
I had a feeling that might have involved something like that. So anyways, that's what has brought me to this point. So, a few things. On the back table, you will find notebooks like this. And in that notebook, you will find the letters that various organizations wrote to the town requesting an appropriation from us. So if you're curious about, you know, what the letter requesting the funds from any organization looked like, you can find it back there on the table. We used to put those in the town booklet, but that's a lot, they were like sixty pages or something. So we didn't need sixty pages more in the booklet. So that's the reason they're on the back table. Also on that back table, you will find something that looks like this. This is a survey from the Brookline Meeting House Committee as to the future use of the meeting house. So if you'd like to pick one of these up and take some time to fill it out, there is a box, cardboard box on the back table, that if you have filled it out, you can leave it right there. And I believe that you can fill out these online also. So if that's more your speed, then you can go that route. What else? There are extra booklets on the back table, I think?
Yes.
So if you don't have a booklet, or if you're lacking one, you can get one there. Julie LaVornia, where are you? There you are. Julie's got a wonderful list serve here in town that keeps town members apprised of what's going on in town at any point. Could be like a warning about this meeting, could be a lost dog or cat. It's a handy thing to have, and Julie, you wanted to say a few words about that?
Oh, there's a sign-up sheet in the back on the clipboard. Please, if you're not on the list and you'd like to be, please sign up. And I also wanted to mention that if you haven't gotten a message recently, you're on the list, but you haven't gotten a message recently, it may mean that MailChimp in some strange way has knocked you off the list. People seem to get unsubscribed for no reason whatsoever, even though they didn't do it purposely. So if you think you may be one of these people, also sign the list and maybe put a star next to your name. They don't allow me to put you back on, you have to actually ask. So I'll send you the link that you have to use in order to get put back on the list. But the more people we have, the better. We have almost a hundred and eighty people on the list now, and it would be great to have more.
Thank you. One note, too, normally in the past, our representatives from Montpelier have been with us on this evening or day to talk to us a little bit about what's going on in the legislature of Montpelier. That's not going to happen this year, so we won't have them coming to speak to us tonight. They had wanted to do that, but they talked to the Select Board, and the Select Board felt there were enough issues that might keep us late enough here tonight that we didn't want to add on another layer. But you should know that once a month, they set up a time to meet with voters at the library in Bellis Falls. I'm not sure when the next one is.
It's around the eighteenth of March, if I'm not mistaken. Whatever the closest Saturday is to that date, I think it's around.
So those sorts of things, I think, have been put out on the front board forum and other things like that. So you won't be hearing from them tonight. We do have a sign-up list that I'd like to send around, have everybody sign your name on, and just put your name on there and pass it along. Great. A couple of other things, just in terms of guidelines for the meeting. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but I think it's probably good that we do that. And I would like to go over those things with you a little bit. Roberts rules are the rules that we use for the meeting here. There are a few instances where Vermont law supersedes Roberts. Not many, but just so you know that. Only registered voters are allowed to speak at the meeting, and non-registered voters can speak with the approval of the Assembly. Requires two-thirds of us to allow that to happen. But what I'd like to do, and I don't mean to embarrass anybody, put you in this position, but is there anybody in the room who is not a voter of Brookline? Okay? And could you identify yourselves?
Mike DiSocio.
Okay.
I'm Beckley Goddard at the library, at the Morphe Library.
Okay, I recognize both of you, but thank you for that. And so as long as you're aware, you won't be able to vote on voice votes or any other sort of vote, that's fine. But welcome, glad to have you here. If you want to speak, you've got to be recognized by the moderator first, and all your comments, motions, anything else should be directed up here to me and not to any individual in the audience. When you're recognized to speak, I'd like you to stand, and because this is a legal proceeding, I'd like you to give your name, say what you want to say. After you've spoken on any particular article, you won't be able to speak again until everybody else who wants to speak has had a chance to speak, as long as we know that. An article must be moved and seconded and restated by the moderator before it's open for discussion. You can amend articles, and amendments may be amended once, we have to do that. Let's see, when electing town officers from the floor, as we're going to be doing tonight, Vermont state law requires that we use paper ballots for the elections of Select Board members, listers, auditors, and school directors. So if there's just one candidate for any one of those offices, there are ways around that where somebody can offer a motion for the town clerk to cast one ballot for that person. And that allows us to fulfill the law and still do things without having to go through the paper ballot process of all of this. Let's see. My role as moderator is to help you do what you want to do here today, and to do it in a way that's legal. I am not an attorney, I don't pretend to be one, I don't play one on TV. So, you know, my judgment is not the final judgment. You can question me on things. If you don't think I've ruled properly, you can let me know, and we'll deal with that at the time. But if there's something that's happening that you're unsure of, you don't know what's going on, just raise your hand and ask a question, and we'll try to get you straightened out. We've always done things in a pretty informal manner here in Brookline, which I think has been nice. But on the other hand, this is a legal legislative proceeding, so there are legalities that we have to follow as we go along. Other than that, anything that comes up, let's see how we do. So, any questions at this point? Article one is to elect the town moderator for a term of one year, and it would be appropriate to nominate someone, and nominations do not need to be seconded, so.
I'd like to nominate David Parker.
You're one of those twelve votes. David Parker's been nominated. Anybody else? Hearing no other nominations, I would close that process. All in favor of electing David Parker as your town moderator for a term of one year? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and thank you, I guess. It's not a bad job, you just don't get to use your skills as often as you might like, Tom. Article two, shall the voters authorize the Select Board to appoint a town treasurer as provided in Seventeen VSA Section 2651F/A for a term of one year? I'd look to the board for a motion on this, since this is where this originates.
Testing, oh, it's working, okay. I think I had said, I know I'd sent out an email, and I also put it in our Select Board report, that the town of Brookline, with her population of about five hundred and thirty people, is having a difficult time finding enough members of the community to take part in the part of the legislative body here in Brookline. And so in the past seven years, we've had five different treasurers. And what we're looking for, when I did some research and I contacted the legal team at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, they recommended that this article is being used by several other towns in the same situation. It does not prohibit any Brookliner from choosing to run for the position of town treasurer or to be appointed as town treasurer, but it does not require them to be a member of the town of Brookline. So right now, the law is that if you are to be a town treasurer, to be elected, it's an elected position, you must be a resident. And we're just not finding the people who have the skill of municipal government or municipal treasury knowledge to do that. Right now, we have, well, actually Guy appointed her, it was Melissa Brown was the assistant treasurer to Guy Tanza, and Melissa has, is a member of Newfane, and she is the treasurer for the town of Newfane. David Jones is currently our appointed resident treasurer, and he has appointed Melissa as his assistant. Melissa is interested in staying on, which we can't do that unless this town votes to allow for non-residents to take this position. So that's what we're here to ask, if this is possible, unless there's someone we can find that, no one has approached me, that can be, that is interested and skilled to do the town treasury position for an elected position. So being able to go outside of Brookline is what we're looking for right this time.
Questions? Comments? Guess you'd like to vote. Well, we can do that. Let's see, we need to frame this in terms. The motion then would be the voters, for the voters to authorize the Select Board to appoint a town treasurer as provided in Seventeen VSA Section 2651F/A for a term of one year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the Select Board has been authorized to appoint a town treasurer if needed.
Thank you.
Article three, shall the voters authorize the Select Board to appoint a collector of delinquent taxes as provided in Seventeen VSA Section 2651D for a term of one year? We would need a motion and a second for this, too.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so moved as the article's read?
So moved as the article's read.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, hey, Marie Tattersall has seconded the... Discussion.
For the same reason as the treasurer, usually the treasurer is also the collector of delinquent taxes, and also usually the trustee of public funds, but it's just for the same reasoning, lack of people who would do this otherwise.
Anything else? All right, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, I should read it first. "The voters would authorize the Select Board to appoint a collector of delinquent taxes as provided in Seventeen VSA Section 2651D for the term of one year." All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and Article three passes. Okay, Article four, to elect all other town offices required by law, so we can have a series of nominations here. The first office that we'd be looking at is the office of town clerk, its term is one year, nominations for that position would be in order.
I'll nominate Guy Tanza.
Oh, he's got to raise his hand?
Yeah. Archie?
I'd make the same motion.
Okay, Guy Tanza has been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing none, let's close the nomination process. All those in favor of electing Guy Tanza as your town clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and Guy, you're there again.
Thank you.
The next position is town treasurer. Let's see, no, we don't need to go there?
Yes.
Good, and we don't need to go for the delinquent tax collector. Okay, there's a Select Board position open, and you can find a list of open positions on the following page, right after the warning, it would be page two. And this would be the term that is currently vacant, I think, right? No, no, I take it back.
Yeah, it's a currently vacant three-year, oh no, Bruce Mello's term.
Expires this year, 2023, so 2023.
Okay, so that would be the office, it's held by you, Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, so nominations would be in order. The Select Board's been operating at reduced capacity here for the last couple of years. Be nice to have a full board. Come on, folks, somebody out there. Yes, Pat?
I nominate Bruce Mello.
Bruce Mello's the nominee. You want to be nominated?
Yes.
Okay, good. Any other nominations? All right, hearing none, we'll go to a vote. And I guess with one person here, the motion that I'd be looking for would be for the town clerk to cast one ballot for Bruce Mello. So it needs to come from the audience now, not from me.
So moved.
Gary LaVornia has moved that the town clerk casts one ballot for Bruce Mello for the position, a three-year term on the Select Board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? And the town clerk will cast the one ballot for Bruce Mello.
Thank you.
Great, good. Okay, we've got a Select Board seat for two years. Which one is it? Dots. Is it Dots? Okay, so nominations would be in order. Marie Tattersall?
I nominate Dot Maggio.
Okay, Dot Maggio's been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing none, let's close the nomination process, and I'd entertain a motion for the town clerk to cast one ballot for Dot.
So moved.
Okay, Julie LaVornia has moved that the town clerk casts one ballot for Dot Maggio for the two-year Select Board seat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The town clerk is authorized to cast one ballot for Dorothy Maggio to finish the two-year Select Board term. Okay, we've got another Select Board seat. It's a two-year term to finish the remainder of a term, and that, I guess, would be the vacancy that's there, right?
I think it's one year, Select Board member for one year, remainder of a three-year term.
Yeah, whatever it's written here. Select Board member for two years, remainder of a three.
It was due to expire next town meeting.
Okay, so there's a two-year seat on the Select Board that's available, nominations would be in order. Come on.
It's fun up here.
Look at it this way, if you choose to take this job, you get a week's vacation, the first meeting isn't until next week. How many jobs does that work? You could make a mention of something.
Our Select Board is in need of, you know, additional manpower, brain power, pencil power, to do a variety of different projects. We're working on a lot of grants, so if you have a financial background and you can help with doing spreadsheets and looking at grants and projecting the cost of things in advance, that would be very helpful. If you have computer technology, IT background, and you would like to help us to, you know, improve our web presence or become more forward-thinking in those areas, this is the kind of thing that we need people to step up for. If you have an interest in historic buildings or anything of that sort, we have three historic sites here in town that we're trying to manage, and the Select Board is ultimately responsible for them as well. So we're just looking for people who are interested, you know, it's a job, there's a lot of correspondence that is associated with being on the Select Board, and it takes a lot of time, more than we'd like to admit, but these three, these two gentlemen and myself, I know we've worked very hard on making sure things are done the right way, and we would gladly work with, we need two more people to make the five-member board at this time. This way, we don't have, this way, every vote has to be unanimous at this time in order to get anything passed, and every meeting has to be fully attended because it wouldn't be a quorum if someone's sick. So this is, you know, this is a problem, but we can appoint if no one decides to run, and if we see somebody later on, we could ask, we think could come in as an appointment, but at this time, we'd like someone to volunteer to run.
So, having heard that... The update. Okay, well, we will leave that as an open question, I guess, at the moment. I almost hate to ask this, but there's another Select Board seat. The remainder of it's for one year, be a nice way to get your feet wet, see if it's something you might like. You've been nominated.
I said the proud Roman.
Excellent. Actually, it's timely, Paul. We're looking for a Select Board member for one year, knowing that you're a man with lots of time on his hands.
I had a visit with a Select Board member last summer, they're all doing an excellent job. I'll remind you.
Vote of confidence, but no nomination. Anybody interested? Okay? Well, we will leave that as it is for the moment. Okay, that takes us down to a lister position for one year, it's the remainder of a three-year term. Okay? Anybody interested in being a lister? Well, we'll leave that. There's a two-year term for listers.
It's paid.
I think it's twelve dollars, I mean, sixteen, sixteen.
And there's another lister for a three-year term. See people shaking their heads, no, 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 okay? We will move over those. That brings us down to an auditor position. This is a position currently held, I think, by Kendra Brooks.
Yeah.
It's a three-year term, nominations would be in order. Do we know if Kendra would like to do this again?
I meant to call her, and I did not. I'd like to nominate Kendra Brooks.
That's where we're at, we're nominating people who aren't here.
If she doesn't take the oath, then we'll put it out for appointment, but...
Okay, so there is a nomination then on the floor for Kendra Brooks. Anybody else like to offer a name? All right?
If she accepts.
Let's see, well, let's vote on that then. I'd entertain a motion for the town clerk to cast one ballot for Kendra Brooks. Somebody would do so?
So.
Okay, it's been moved that the town clerk cast one ballot for Kendra Brooks for the lister position.
Oh, auditor.
Pardon me?
Auditor.
Oh, auditor. Yes, excuse me.
And a lister, we can make a...
Let me rephrase then. A motion has been made...
By whom?
To have the town clerk...
By whom?
Maryam Albi.
Maryam Albi. For the town clerk to cast one ballot for Kendra Brooks for the auditor position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the town clerk will cast that ballot appropriately. There is a cemetery commissioner position that is open, it's a five-year term.
I'd like to make a motion to elect Lori Now Martucci for a five-year term as a cemetery commissioner.
Okay, and I'm presuming that she's aware of this?
Yes, she told me she was, she's not here, she told me she would be interested in fulfilling some of the jobs that her mother passed away last May, and so she'd like to be on the cemetery commission.
Okay, any other nominations? Hearing none, let's see, we don't need to go, we can do a voice vote on this. All in favor of electing Lori Now Martucci as a cemetery commissioner for a term of five years, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and you've elected Lori to the cemetery commissioner position, five-year term. There's another cemetery commissioner position, for two years, it's the remainder of a five-year term. Nominations would be in order?
No, he's not in.
No, he's not nominated.
Ah, excuse me. So we're here, so I nominate Dorothy Maggio.
Dorothy Maggio has been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Let's go to a vote. All those in favor of electing Dorothy Maggio to the cemetery commissioner to two-year term, filling out a five-year term, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and you've elected Dot as your cemetery commissioner. Last one here is a trustee of public funds for a one-year term. And this is currently held by Melissa Turner.
Yes, she's been appointed last year when we didn't have the position.
Okay, would anybody have a desire to nominate someone for this? Okay, hearing none. I guess you guys will appoint again. Good, that brings us down to Article Five. shall the voters accept the auditor's report? I would entertain a motion for this. Yes, Marie?
I have the motion to accept the auditor's report as written.
A motion has been made to accept the audit, and made and seconded by Gary LaVornia to accept the auditor's report. Hearing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the auditor's report as written, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and Article Five passes. Article Six. Shall the voters authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of $179,262, of which $133,438 shall be raised by taxes and $45,824 by non-tax revenues. Need a motion and a second to begin discussion. Okay, it's been moved, a second for it. It's been moved and seconded that the voters authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of $179,262, of which $133,438 be raised by taxes and $45,824 by non-tax revenues. Would the select board like to say anything about this to get us going on discussion?
Could I just ask who moved it and seconded? I didn't hear the name.
Stuart Duke moved it, and.
Miriam Albee.
Miriam Albee seconded.
If you're looking on page nine in your booklet, you see the town operating revenues and on here, and again, we see a decrease in the town operating current taxes, a decrease of $12,229. We tried, we were saving some money here on the current use, and we have applied revenue from the building rental against the tax liability. As you'll see, or hopefully as you studied the report, you will notice that each line item has been addressed in detail, and it is the tightest budget we can provide for our current municipal budget.
Stuart? Are there any items in this budget that kind of stand out for the select board?
Not on the municipal side, but I defer to my select room. Right, now, the town operating revenues, current use, dog fees, licensing, so on and so forth, that's listed here, pretty straightforward. I think we did a very good job on on doing the planning for the fiscal proposal, considering the costs that have gone up here and there, the service costs.
This was two months' worth of work. We really got our nose into it quite deep, because we're taxpayers too, and we want to do it right.
Okay, Marie?
I have one question, the schoolhouse revenue, where was that classified in prior years?
I can answer that just to start off with. Okay, when we bought this building for a dollar in 2014, we were told that it would take approximately 20 years and $200,000 to bring the building back up due to the deferred maintenance that had, deferred maintenance that had not occurred in the building when it was transferred over to the New Haven School District, the Newburgh Elementary, the new that they yeah, you know, probably, well, we transferred the building over to the school system over in New Haven. But we were able to, in what, eight years and for approximately $120,000 worth, give or take, we were able to bring this building up to code. We were able to provide a rental unit, and so most of the original monies was put back into the building for the boiler, the gas boiler. We had to put money into the ultraviolet light system. We put money into removing rot and staining the building. We reattached fire escapes, the decking, and we removed trees that were dangerous. So there was a lot of money that was coming in for the revenue that we never used taxpayer money, that was all pre-tax, it was all.
Lease money.
Yes, lease money. So now, now the building, we feel, is on par with an excellent facility, and so going forward, we should be able to be more flexible with it and apply it towards other needs. Bruce is our building commissioner, and if you wanted to add anything, Bruce, you know, you've been here, you've come down when the toilets were flooding or the lights wouldn't go off, or the doors wouldn't lock, so, yeah.
Well, quite frankly, it had been a long haul for the last four years, but the building was a mess, top to bottom. And except for some insulation things that should be done now, which should come out of grant efficiency, you know, at 172, we've mostly satisfied the needs to bring the building up to snuff. There's some other things going on that aren't serious. We spent a lot of money last year on the HVAC system, it was a disaster. And now you look around, you'll see the heat pumps, which didn't come out of your tax dollars, it came out of ARPA money. So things have changed a lot, and as opposed to close to two dozen visits by Coda and Coda, last year there was zero instances this year of heating issues. And you try and tell them, I see that your heating system doesn't work. See how that works for it. But everything else came together in time, like Dot alluded to. That door right over there that has the exit sign on it, had rod on it, and it was determined that the ventilators were never used, so moisture was pouring on that, on that door, and it just so happened, we caught it with the studs being half-rotten. Not for too long when it out it, but like Dot said, we painted the building, we fixed the old windows upstairs, the tank windows, and a bunch of other things, if everybody else is interested in the other details. I can do that for the time, I don't think everyone wants to hear blow-by-blow what I've done for four years with the help of other people. But we're in good shape now, is the bottom line.
Any other questions for discussion? Let's see, Doug?
Yes, could you explain what the select board administrative assistant position that's added is and how that's different than the clerk, select board clerk?
Oh, absolutely. We had a recording clerk, his name is Peter Barris. We've had other recording clerks, Shannon Meckle was one for a while and such. But he retired in December. And so a recording clerk attends select board meetings either in person or by Zoom, and takes the minutes and provides a document draft and final documents for posting. And since December, Stan Noga has been doing not only the minutes, but updating the drafts and such. An administrative assistant, it would be someone that would come in and help with the select board in some we write our own letters, make all the own, we put together all the contract packets. We have to do all, our filing system is a mess upstairs. So an administrative assistant would help with whatever we need. We could actually add in, the administrative assistant hopefully would also take over the job as a recording clerk. But we, the administrative assistant in the budget is for the July 2023 to June 2024. So we don't have any administrative assistant now, nor do we have a recording clerk. But a person to help us, the three of us, get our work done and make sure it's done on a timely basis. We're having a very hard time on this. Yeah, this has turned into a job with three of us, and so an assistant is necessary, especially when we don't have a full select board.
There are a number of other things that that person would be doing. Research, when we wanted to do something in terms of the treasurer and collector of taxes, that involves checking with ELCT, the Law League of Cities and Towns, making sure that we reference the appropriate statutes, that we take the appropriate action in implementing it. So there's a number of research topics that probably that person would be looking into for us, as well as the basics. And from the standpoint of taking minutes, since I've been doing it, it takes me three to six hours, depending on whether we get done at eight or whether we get done at nine. You know, you can be listening, you can be there, but as you're writing something, an exchange can happen, so you go back and look at the video of the meeting and to make sure that you got it right, so. And then going through and checking for the errors after you're doing it. So there's, it's two distinct roles to take. The amount of, I think it's 20 hours per month that we were expecting the assistant to fill, to use three to six hours of that on the minutes alone might put us, not allow us to get to the goal or the range of the depth of what we'd like to have happen in that role, otherwise, if we're otherwise. So that's, that's a little bit more.
I have a follow-up, so. I'm still a little confused whether we're looking for one or two people to do that, and if there was a full select board, you know, if you guys envision discontinuing after there's a five-person select board, is this a permanent position you're creating here?
That's right, it's a fair question. I would like to say yes, I do think that going forward, the select board needs to have the nuances and the amount of correspondence that has to go on on a daily basis, reviewing emails, making sure that everything is prepared, would be something that would be helpful if we could have someone to assist in that position. Again, it's, we estimated $20 an hour for 20 hours a month to help us move forward, and that would be the max, that's $4,800 a year.
In one sense, Doug, it's almost like a moving target, because when I was on the select board back in 2014, 15, when you were on, nothing against my performance or anybody else, it was a lot slower then.
Yes.
We didn't have as much computer. Now, in terms of grants, responding to the agency of transportation, et cetera, they email you. And now there's, when you pay your bills, it's by online methods. It's not put it in the mail, and they'll get it in seven days, and you may hear from them another 14 or 21 days after that. It's, things happen a lot faster. And not only that, but I don't know about you, but when I'm out functioning in a world, it's, things have changed in COVID. People will, I'll ask people a question or something, or email, asking an answer to a question that I proposed to them, and I might not hear from them for two or three weeks. It's like, yeah, they can wait, things are a little slower, we're used to Zoom, we're not there. And we don't tend to operate that way. I mean, you'll notice, for those of you who've asked a question or so, you usually get an answer within 24 hours, and that's the way we like it to be. So you feel you're being served, we know we're serving you, and you don't feel like you're left out of the picture, and maybe we'll get back to you when we feel like it. It's, it's a different, it's a different animal today than it was. So I can't say what it's going to be in two years or what have you. As Dot said, I think ideally, it would be really nice to have that fourth or fifth select board member take that on. But, but, you know, a year from now, I don't know what to make of it, you know? It's, it's, there's a lot of MRPGs, which is one of the road grant processes, changed dramatically over the, the end of the year. All of a sudden, what we were doing online wasn't applicable anymore. People weren't getting our fees and our documents. So you're spending time going over that again, telling them what they, who you sent it to, and revisiting the issue again, so. I think the idea that you're focusing on is a good question. It's just that it's hard to say whether we implement it now, whether it'll be valid in 18 months.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none?
I was just going to say call the question.
In that case, it's not even debatable. We'll do it. Shall the, uh, excuse me, the voters, our motion was that the voters would authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses. At least, wait a minute, am I on the right note?
So, yeah, you're right.
Yes, $179,262, of which $133,438 would be raised by taxes and $45,824 by non-tax revenues. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and you've passed Article Six. Article Seven, shall the voters authorize highway fund expenditures of $409,520, of which $355,722 shall be raised by taxes and $53,798 by non-tax revenues. Need a motion and a second? I can't do it.
It's not moved.
It's been moved, and is there a second to Article Seven? And, okay, so that was Sally Fegley who moved this, and.
Joe Slater.
Joe Slater.
Joe Slater, who has seconded that. Would you like me to read this again? You know what you're discussing? Let's go to a discussion of the Article Seven. Any questions? Comments? Gary LaVornia?
I'd like to thank Mark Bills personally, and the whole town knows him, a great debt, because the way he takes care of the roads, whether it's, you know, a washout, whether it's gravel in the mud season, whether it's to push it back to snowbanks, he's there all the time, doing roadside mowing, taking down trees, I mean, he's busy all the time. Done a great job, and also Archie's crew in the wintertime for the snow and sand.
Here we go.
There, there, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, and again, thanks for Archie for doing the winter roads, and he and Eric make decisions, and doing a good job.
Give your agent a copy of the tape, Mark. Any other comments? Sam?
There's another part of Mark's job that we don't see as we're going around town and seeing what Mark does, but after we had the flood in the summer of 2021, obviously, there was a lot of work that needed to be done. And the state's got a system whereby they have every culvert, every bridge, et cetera, in the system. And they've just changed the way they're doing the culvert system online. So Mark and I were sitting one Friday morning doing the culverts from the top of Putney Mountain, down Putney Mountain Road. And it was, it was an eye-opener. I was opening up each of the culverts there, and before I finished opening it, Mark told me what the wing walls were, what the culvert was made of, plastic, metal, you know, how long it was, and darned, if I opened it up, and sure enough, he was right on the wall. There's a whole nother segment that he devotes his time to and efforts that is an invaluable thing. I honestly didn't need to use the program if I didn't want to. He's that up on it, and that's something that I know as a citizen, I appreciate, because it's, it's a time saver to have somebody that knowledgeable, where they can tell you what that, amongst all the other culverts in town, what that one has and the next one has and the next one. So I just want to point that out, we're lucky to have him here.
Thank you again. I've seen you all these years.
Good. Any other comments? Yes, Doug?
Could somebody just explain all the big dollar increases here?
All right. In July of 2021, we had that storm. It was declared a disaster in the state of Vermont. It's called Disaster 4621. And it created some problems here in Brookline, where we had damage on Grassy Brook Road, Hill Road, Athens Road, Parker Road, Putney Mountain Road.
Whitney Hill?
Whitney Hill Road. There was damage all over the place. We -- FEMA, our federal government, came in and provided us with a consultant to review over the work that needed to be repaired. And we were woefully unprepared for the amount of work that needed to be done to close up Putney Mountain. I can show you pictures of Archie Clark, neck high in a culvert, in a washout on Putney Mountain Road, and all the work that had to be done to close up those roads. Now, on February 14th, I got a letter from the federal government saying that they are pleased to announce that the Office of Recovery Programs contact center will be reopening starting February 21st. We have to pay for everything ahead -- we have to pay for all of the repairs and wait for a reimbursement. We have not gotten 10 cents back yet from the reimbursement for the work. These numbers that you see represent the extent of us using up all of our highway budget for one year and realizing that we have to pad this year's highway budget in order to close out the program. We have four more complete RFPs to do on Putney Mountain this year. In fact, we got an extension from FEMA. Everything was supposed to be done within 18 months, which would be March 18th of this year, but I got an extension till December, and we -- An RFP, request for proposal, to do the work. I'm sorry. I learned all this lingo over the past few years, and it's like, oh, RFP. We have four more major repair projects to complete, and it will cost more money. That's why you're seeing $70,000 in additional repairs and $40,000 for additional services. We expect 90% of our expenditures to be refunded to the town in Brookline. So we're looking at plus or minus $10,000 from $190,000 of expenses, above and beyond last year's budget. So that's why these numbers look high at this time. We will be getting reimbursement, and it will be reflected in the following budget. So it's not a consistent -- that those numbers are not going to be consistently. They're, yeah, they're going to be revised, and you will, the next audit will review and show you the transparency of the FEMA reimbursements. But that's our problem. We did not have money enough to pay for everything, and so we had to wait an extra year and continue to ask for it. So in July, when we, the new budget rolls around, we'll be able to rent the excavator and to get our work done. We're going to be putting out the RFPs, and everything should be done by October of this year. We did get a notice that we may be getting back, I think it was, what was it, $11,000 of, in the next six weeks. So I did get an email saying that one of the Whitney Hill and Hill Road and Parker Road areas have been approved and have been obligated to the town. And so we'll start seeing it trickle in, but it hasn't trickled in yet, and that's why we had to demonstrate our fiscal responsibility and provide money to pay for the rest of these repairs.
Answer your question.
Sort of. So you're saying that all this is going to be refunded in next year's budget? So would I be in line making and amending this vote to say that, you know, if passed as it is, that all FEMA grant money be returned to the taxpayers in the 2025 budget?
That's not what he's asking. Say that again?
So amending the budget vote to require you guys to refund it to the taxpayers in next year's budget? Not just taking your word that it's going to be refunded, making an amendment to the budget?
Did you talk to him?
To the taxpayers. You know, that it comes, you know, whether that goes to coming off our taxes next year or just reducing the budget by $100,000 next year, so we could be expecting, you know, a $100,000 highway request and not a $400,000 highway request?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's the plan.
That is the plan, but if we vote for it, then it is written down that that's what's going to happen.
That's fine, but you got to understand, we don't control the money coming in. If FEMA gives us the money.
NuFain took five years to -- NuFain just got back some Irene money. So the federal government's not that quick, so I can't guarantee you'll get all our refund in one year.
I'm just saying that what we do get gets applied to reduction of taxes in future years and not spent on some other highway project.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I think that's what our intent is.
And that's what I heard your intent was, but I just want to put that in writing as an amendment.
I don't, I would sense that I don't have a problem with it, but the only thing that we kept running into is, Bruce alluded to, we were told that we were supposed to get disbursements of monies last summer.
June.
And then we were told, well, we're going to get disbursements of monies in the fall of 2022. Dot conversed with FEMA at the end of the year, and it was said that we might get monies in the middle of 2023. And I think if we are careful not to infringe on the possibility that it may go a lot farther based on NuFain's experience than what we think it is and not get ourselves in the bottleneck, I personally am willing to try whatever you feel comfortable with, because as you say, I'm a citizen too, and if we get $190,000, or actually, it's closer to 190 minus 20, close to 170, that, you know, that would be nice to reduce all our taxes.
Absolutely.
I'm just not sure from a parliamentary situation whether you could obligate a board to pay something that they are unsure of when they are going to get the money. You're saying your amendment?
When I originally stated that, I said in the 2025 budget, but I would be willing to change that to future budgets as the grant money comes in.
Okay, that would, I think, get us through. So is that an amendment you would like to make?
Yes, it is.
All right, so frame it up.
That was my main point, is that whatever the amendment needs to be, it does not have to specify a specific fiscal year. Simply state that all of the FEMA funds, when reimbursed to the town, will be returned to the taxpayer. Regardless of the year, regardless if it's, you know, $50,000 one year, $80,000 the next year, it all needs to get back there.
All right, so frame the amendment for me. There isn't a desire to amend? Yes?
I just have one question. I'm just curious, because the money that we spent for the roads to be repaired, we spent that last year, and I'm just curious why that wouldn't be an accounts receivable for last year. Going forward this year, that money would pay off that accounts receivable. Am I wrong in that thinking?
We were told not to project receiving money in any calendar year because of the fact that the Treasury, Office of Recovery Programs was closed due to COVID. So their delay in sending it wouldn't allow us to, I approached the, we did discuss about anticipated refund, but we can't anticipate the time that they're going to do the refund. That's the problem.
Right, but we spent those funds prior to July 1st of this year, which started the new fiscal year. So to me, that would almost be accounts receivable for the year 2122 versus 2223. Am I wrong in that thinking?
I would indicate that my response to that would be, I would probably want the treasurer to address that. She's already dealing with issues over there in terms of FEMA and NuFain. When we took the couple of months to do the budget thoroughly, looking at municipal and highway sides, there was an opportunity for that issue to arise, and it did not. So that would tend to reply no to your question. It's not, not a methodology that, for whatever an accounting reason, a municipal accounting reason, it didn't seem to apply. Otherwise, I would send the person, would send.
We spent it in the year 21, the fiscal year ending 20, July 1st, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2022. So to me, that money that's owed to the town would be in an accounts receivable account. That's what my thinking is. Because we spent it, and now we're waiting to get that money back. It's like delinquent taxes. If someone doesn't pay their delinquent taxes, we can't count that as revenue, because that's money that's owed to us. So to me, that would be, I would think that would be an accounts receivable from FEMA. Am I wrong in that thinking?
I don't have the technical expertise to ask that question. I'm thinking of other monies where we've had grant funds, like the shed, the town shed. You know, that was not handled as a accounts receivable in terms of what was promised to us. So, yeah, I don't know if they're comparable or not. I'm not a treasurer, but I can't answer your question as an individual, and I don't think as a board we know the answer.
Marie?
Okay, there are a couple of people who wanted to speak here. Marie, your expertise may be valuable.
Maybe. Guy, I think about all of the times that school meetings were discussing specifically.
Can you repeat that, Marie?
Sure.
Don.
Thank you, Dan. I'm thinking about special education as school meetings. Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Repeatedly, the schools have to make expenses for children that need extra services, and then they get reimbursed in a future year. Just like we're repairing roads now and will be reimbursed in a future year. Nobody recognizes the school or the town revenue before we get it. We wait until we get it. Businesses often use on a cruel basis, but the town and the school don't do that for this circumstance. Accounts receivable is nice, but it's, it's just not the way town government or school government works.
That's a good point. I believe the county's on a cash basis and not on a cruel basis, so.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay. Stuart, you had wanted to say something?
Yeah, I'm not sure whether this comes before or after the framing of the amendment.
Well, we're sort of discussing the main article here before we get into the amendment, so it, yeah, I understand here. I'm wondering myself, so.
Yeah, sorry, Stuart, too. In support of the spirit of that amendment, I would suggest that, that without layering on more onto the select board, we've heard that they want to be accountable for the reimbursement of these funds, and if that shows up in next year's warning and next year's budget, the taxpayers will have the opportunity to review that and scrutinize it and hold the board, if necessary, to be accountable to that. I don't, I'm not sure I feel like it needs an amendment to that end.
Okay. Dot?
I would just like to say that I would like to include, let, I will communicate very clearly through our listserv and invite members of our community to come in and sit in on any little workshops when we start doing our budget and to actually go through the auditing of these FEMA funds, and that would be fine with me. If you don't want to be a select board member, but you want to help out, this would be an example of an area that I will do an outreach and say, we're going to be working on the FEMA refunds on this date, and please come and let me know, and any help we can get would be much appreciated. I am a retired school teacher. I can push papers around, and I can run a meeting, but I'm not an accountant, and, you know, we all have our different strengths, and we can certainly use help in any of these areas. So yes, Doug, if you would like to be a part of that, I will reach out to you through the listserv and anyone, just to make sure that there's a transparency, and I understand your concern. This is a tight budget. It's tied. It is, but we'll fix our roads. We've got grants to mitigate even better than what they started out to be, and, you know, we will be fiscally responsible to the community.
Julie?
Julie, I think that adding an amendment onto this, adding an amendment onto this item is showing a lack of confidence in a select board that has bent over backwards to try to put this thing together under very, very difficult circumstances. And I, for one, trust them that when the money comes in, they will do the proper thing with it. And I think it would just be too complicated to try to figure out how to format this amendment. I just, I'm against doing an amendment, all respect to you, Doug, but I'm completely against that.
Bruce?
Doug, would you be comfortable with next year, if we get $80,000 in from FEMA, it's stated in the road, in the road budget, FEMA plus $80,000? Would that answer your concern?
No, I would still like to offer the amendment, and, you know, the voters here can vote up or down on that.
That's where some of our discussion probably should have been anyways, but as to the actual wording of that.
I think Joseph stated it better than I did there, so.
I might need a little help with this, but it could be something as simple as, upon the town receiving full reimbursement from FEMA, it will return all funds to the taxpayers.
How about all FEMA reimbursement funds will be returned to the taxpayers?
There you go.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
All right. So it has been moved, an amendment to Article Seven has been moved that would read, all FEMA reimbursement funds will be returned to the town. Is there a second for that? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We can discuss this now. We sort of, it's all tied together, so. Any?
Is the amendment, the FEMA reimbursement funds to be returned to the taxpayers or to the taxpayers, not the town?
To the taxpayers.
To the taxpayers.
Right, that's what Joseph said. Upon full reimbursement, FEMA reimbursement funds returned to the taxpayers.
Yeah.
What happens if it's a part of the reimbursement?
Could we rephrase that such that as it comes in? Instead of waiting until it all comes in?
All FEMA reimbursement funds will drive our treasury.
Sam, I think that that, we don't necessarily need to phrase it as that, because you have discretion at that point, you know? We're not saying you need to give it all, you have to hold on to it and wait until you have it all. It's just saying that you have to give it all back to the town. And then that leaves it open to your discretion, whether it's, you know, whether it's, you only got $5,000 next year, so you just, you just wait until you get the $190,000. That's my opinion that this is legally binding, if we vote on this, that all the funds are required to be returned to the taxpayers, and then we leave how that happens up to your discretion.
I understand it.
I think the more discretion you guys have is probably best for everybody, sir.
I don't want to be pigeonholed.
The voters trust you. I think we need to go with that. More discussion on the amendment. Okay, we'll go to a vote. And the amendment proposed would be added on to Article 7, saying that all FEMA reimbursement funds will be returned to the taxpayers. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
My ears aren't as good as they used to, if I know that, but that sounded darn close to me. Let's see. Let's get everybody up and stretching. If you are in favor of adding this amendment, I would like you to stand on this side of the room. If you are opposed to that amendment, I'd like you to stand on the other side, over here. Yays, on my right, noes to the left. See, think of this as a robot.
What if I'm not voting? Because I don't know if voting is voting.
Well, now, I, I, I was rebasing this, too. I was hoping that this would be the easier way for us than going to a paper ballot. If seven of you request a paper ballot, that's the way we'll do it. If you'd like to keep your vote more private now that you are inside your room, it's up to you. To me, this would be the easiest, just to count heads, but.
Do you have a vision, just have the pros stand and count, and then the?
It is, I just thought it'd be easier for counting this way. As a former school teacher, believe me, counting crowds is.
We have turkeys.
22 on that side, David. What's the?
20 on this side.
They don't. No, let's see. We just need a majority. Are you with these guys? There's 20 by my count.
I mean, I, I would have to say, I, I think the amendment was fine, so I could be on this side, and you guys on that side.
So two over here?
Yes.
So that'd be 24 over there, and we have 20 here, and you're gonna go here? So 21, 24, 21. Okay, so that would, you can take your seats again. Thank you. Yeah, if you haven't signed the sign up sheet yet, too, please do. Okay, so, this means that the amendment to Article 7 has been defeated by a vote of 24 to 21. It's close. So nonetheless, in situations like this, I think it's helpful. We had a vote, I think the select board has heard you, and we'll take the direction that has been offered here, whether the amendment is failed or passed, so. That brings us back to Article 7. Any other things that anybody would like to say about this? If not, we'll go to a vote. All right, hearing none. Article 7 reads that the voters would authorize highway fund expenditures of $409,520, of which $355,722 shall be raised by taxes, and $53,798 by non-tax revenues. All in favor of Article 7, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and you've passed Article 7. That brings us to Article 8. Shall the voters authorize the collection of taxes in four installments, with the due dates being August 15th, 2023, November 14th, 2023, February 13th, 2024, and May 14th, 2024? Need a motion and a second to discuss this. It's been moved by Gary Lefornia. Is there a second to that? Gene Albee has seconded Article 8 as we're discussing. This is basically the same dates that we've worked with for, for many years. It's nice that the select board has done the calendar work and has already figured out the days around the 15th where things might happen, so. Good, hearing no discussion, let's vote on it. Rather than read this all again, yeah, I bet. The voters would authorize the collection of taxes in four installments, with the due dates being August 15th, 2023, November 14th, 2023, February 13th, 2024, and May 14th, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the ayes have it, you've passed Article 8. Article 9. Shall the voters appropriate $7,661 to be raised by taxes in support of the following organizations? I'm not going to read all the organizations, they are listed there, and if you are, again, concerned or interested in what the letters look like, they are on the back table for your perusal. So we need a motion and a second to open discussions. Okay, Stuart Duke has moved Article 9, has written, is there a second to that? Mary Tattersall has seconded Article 9. Any discussion, questions? Yeah, I have any. Bruce.
It's been irritating for a long time, and if I could speak for Guy, I think it's been bothering Guy, too. As I have a hard time thinking of why we're spending $1,590 on SEVETS. I want somebody, I've looked into it, Guy and I have talked about it a little now. Can you hear me now? I'm sorry. I've had a hard time justifying the amount of money that we're giving to SEVETS, because I need somebody to tell me what has been done for this community that warrants that $1,590. I have a vote, maybe somebody else does.
There's somebody out here who might have an answer to that.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Davy. I'm an employee at Battle Road Development Credit Corporation, and I'm here on behalf of SEVETS. So SEVETS is the governing board that creates, oh, not projecting, long-term economic strategy for the region, and BDCC develops programs that help support that and implement those programs. So I hear your concern, and I'm going to address that in a second. So, excuse me, I can't read. So you did fund us last year, and we really appreciate that, but I know we only got it by one vote. So what we do is we offer business and technical assistance and entrepreneurial support to local businesses. We help towns with community development projects, and I hear that you're down a couple of select board members, and if that's the case, we could be helpful in providing capacity for you. So if you're looking for help with grants, if you're looking for help with any of those things, we would love for you to reach out to us and, and see if we could help support you. You look surprised.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have a lot of our municipalities who are looking for ways to, to use their ARPA funding, for example, and it's challenging, and we have, you know, towns that have one person who's, who's managing that. We can help you, but we need to have you reach out. So that's just one way that we can help you. We also do workforce development. That's, one of the programs is my program. We operate at all of the high schools in Wyndham County. You may have heard of the Reality Fair that happened at Lehman and Gray in October, a financial literacy event that we held for all Wyndham County high school students, and it was great fun. We do a lot of work at Lehman and Gray High School, and I know that your school is, you know, your students end up going there often. So we do, we do a lot with our programming, and this, we can really take this, this money and leverage it to create more programming and to have a greater impact on the economy and the quality of life here. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Dan Towler.
Dan Towler, I just wanted to, with your permission, ask the representative from SEVETS there, is this amount that they ask for based on population? Do they go to each town and ask for?
Yes. It's $3 per person on the census. That's where they come up with the number.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, questions, comments?
You'll be hearing from us.
Sorry. I'm, I'm curious, you know, our town is, we have limited resources, we have 540 people, and basically, the appropriations in the 30 years that I've been in this town were basically appropriations that really impacted our town. And I find this $1,590 quite a bit for us to swallow. Our appropriations used to be $6,000, now we're approaching the $11,000 figure. I have nothing personal against SEVETS, but the bottom line is that I, I think it's important that we focus on what impacts the town of Brookline, really impacts the town of Brookline. These other organizations definitely impact us, but for some reason, this SEVETS is more of a generalization of Wyndham County, and I would just like to voice my concern about where we're going with appropriations. I just think that that amount of money is way more than any other appropriation that we've passed in the years, and it just seems way too steep. I would see an amendment of maybe to, amended to $500 maybe, but $1,590 is an awful lot of money for our town to swallow.
You want to make that for me?
I would like to make the appropriations contingent upon the Southeast VETS to, from $1,590 to $500.
Run it by me again.
I'm sorry, what was that? I'd like to amend it to $500 from the $1,590.
David? Yeah?
If I understand, that's a suggested figure, the three, I think it's $3 a person, so the town has to figure out if that's in line with their thinking compared to what's in SEVETS mind, that's what's their thinking.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know how this works, actually. We're voting this as a block of money, not line by line, like we did on the Australian ballot, where each item was a separate article. I think the way you would have to amend this article is to reduce the total amount, the $7,661 asked for by the $500 that.
Yeah.
We'd be reducing that amount by $1,090, right?
Would be changing it to $6,571 even.
What was it, Figgis down?
I said, if I, I'm getting older, so I'm going to question. I, I think it comes out to adjusting that number down to $6,571 even, from the 7,661 number.
But I thought they was only knocking off like, they were.
No, we're knocking off.
Knocking off $1,090, so we only end up with 500.
That's Guy's proposal.
Is that your intent?
Pardon?
Was that your intent, offering amendments to?
To make it down to 5,000.
So the total would be 6,571.
Correct.
So, an amendment has been made. Is there a second for this amendment? But the amendment is that we would reduce the funding for the block underneath Article 9 by $1,090 to $6,571. Is there a second for this?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion of this, of the amendment. Dan Towler.
Without saying whether, whether I'm for or against really, but just a comment, when I first saw, a couple of years, I don't know when it was this first came up, but the $1,590, which is, yes, way more than any of the other appropriations, I wonder what the heck is SEVETS, and what do they do, what good are they to the town, and so forth? And I still don't know the entirety of that, but what we've heard, it sounds as if there are services they offer that could be quite valuable to us that we haven't taken advantage of, maybe just because we didn't know about them. But, that's it?
Any other discussion here? Yes?
Hi, Leanne Jelson. Because Chrissy brought it up, I did want to mention, she talked about the workforce in the Oatland and the Reality Fair that they had put on last year for financial literacy. I did also want to point out that that is also being funded through the West River Education District. We had $25,000, I believe, in last year's budget, and the same amount is allocated in this year's budget.
And Leanne is our school board member at, at the high school, so, that's, she's speaking for that authority. Any other comments anybody would like to make?
I have a question.
Yes.
You cannot amend an amendment, correct?
An amendment can be amended once.
Okay. In light of what I've, in light of what I've heard from both people, I think we should split it, right down the freaking middle. No one's in favor of that? Hey, that's, that's what makes the world go around. But I would amend the amendment to say $1,000.
Let's not down the middle.
It's, oh, $1,590. 500 to 1,590 is a.
So all the questions.
795 right down the middle.
Whoever else called a question, you're out of order.
I'm going to shut up for a while, forget it. Gary wanted to say something, I think.
No, I was, I called a question.
Okay.
Any other comments? Yes?
Just, just one comment. Most of us probably don't remember this, but when the town took this building over, the person that took it over as a daycare asked for a grant through SEVETS and got a $5,000 grant to help organize their business to conduct and have evolved into what it's evolved into today. So it was a one-time thing that happened, I believe, I think you check on that. But it doesn't mean, you know, I advocate one position or the other, but it had served a purpose at that point in time.
All right, let's vote on the amendment. If you are not in favor. If you are not in favor of this, then you'll have the opportunity to express yourself through that vote. An amendment has been offered to Article 9 to reduce the total appropriations to be voted on by $1,090 to $6,571 total dollars for that. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. And that would mean that we have reduced the amount of Article 9 by $1,090 to a total of $6,571. Okay. So that takes us back to Article 9. We have to vote on the actual article that has been written down. The amendment was made, and now we, the article has been changed so that the voters would appropriate $6,571 to be raised by taxes in support of the organizations listed below Article 9. All in favor of Article 9, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. You've passed Article 9. Article 10, shall the voters appropriate $300 to be raised by taxes in support of the Winston Proudly Center? No motion?
It's been moved.
It's been moved. We appropriate $300 to be raised by taxes in support of Winston Proudly Center. Any second to that? It's been seconded by Julia Do. Discussion, questions? Yes?
I just wanted to make one thing clear. Obviously, you're seeing these articles being separated. The reason for that is they're either new articles or articles that were over $1,000 bucks. We had discussed this quite seriously, and we really wanted to present it to you in an individual basis, like what just happened with Sevitz. We didn't want to have five of them in the appropriations, discussing this, discussing that, discussing this. So we felt it was more prudent to make them individual, and then we could move forward easier that way.
Okay, so Articles 10 through 13 are new requests. People who have not requested before are either...
Or over $1,000.
Or over $1,000. So that's, if you had a question as to why these were separated out from Article 9, that's fine. Any discussion on 10? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor of appropriating $300 to be raised by taxes in support of the Winston Proudly Center, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, you have a passed Article 10. Article 11 reads, shall the voters appropriate $500 to be raised by taxes in support of the New Pro PTO? Standing for Parent Teacher Organization, just in case. Is there a motion for this? Jean Albee has moved it. Is there a second?
Second.
Leanne Parker has seconded that. Discussion. Hearing none, let's go to the vote. All in favor of appropriating $500 to be raised by taxes in support of the New Fane PTO, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and you've approved $500 for the New Fane PTO. Article 12, shall the voters appropriate $1,000 to be raised by taxes in support of New Fane Anew? Motion?
Make a motion.
Say it. Gary LaVorgna?
I moved the motion.
Oh, Guy Tanza has moved Article 12. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Gary LaVorgna has seconded it. Discussion. Stuart?
I'm sorry, I haven't read the request. Can somebody explain to me what this is for?
It's good to know what you're voting for, right?
New Fane Anew is a non... New Fane Anew is a nonprofit organization dedicated to encouraging goodwill and community spirit. We are a small group of residents of the two towns. In the past, some of the activities New Fane Anew has hosted were concerts on the Common and New Fane, a winter fest celebration. And in the past two years, New Fane Anew has funded and published the New Brook News Quarterly Newsletter. Unfortunately, COVID-19 has put most of the activities on hold. One project we managed to maintain during the many months of isolation was the New Brook Newsletter. The goal of the newsletter is to broaden information about the activities and people in the New Fane and Brookline and to everyone in both towns, even if they do not have access to the internet. This was done by printing the newsletter and mailing it to every household served by the U.S. Postal Services in Brookline and New Fane, Williamsville, and South New Fane zip code. Unfortunately, this summer, we had to suspend publications because we need to raise more funds to continue. The total cost of printing and postage is $1,500 for each issue. We had covered some of the costs by selling space for advertisers and support from generous donors, but the bulk of the costs have been covered by funds which were raised by New Fane Anew in the past, and now there's very little in that fund. We are requesting $1,000 for an annual appropriation from the town of Brookline. This will allow us to restart production of the newsletter for the fiscal year 2023 to continue to foster a sense of community in our small corner of heaven in Vermont. It is with deep gratitude for your time and dedication to our community from the newsletter crew, Priscilla Cotton, Jane Douglas, and Molly Hill.
Any other questions? Gary?
Just a comment, the New Fane Anew sponsored Winter Fest, which was a big celebration for this whole community. A lot of people in Brookline participate in that. Dot brings her little horse down there. Howard brings another horse down. Santa gets in the sleigh, and they go around the Common, and the kids go crazy. But we couldn't do that for two years because of the COVID. And in that time, the organization has kind of drifted apart. They're trying to start this back up again. And I think it's a worthwhile community organization that does a lot for everybody, not just in Brookline, but in our whole area.
Dan Towler?
I was just going to make another comment that I believe that they have gone to the town meeting in New Fane to ask for appropriation, I think it might be two grand, I'm not sure, proportion to the population of New Fane as opposed to Brookline.
Anybody else would like to comment? All right. Let's take it to a vote. Shall the voters appropriate, in other words, you guys, $1,000 to be raised by taxes in support of New Fane Anew? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and you've passed Article 12. Article 13, shall the voters appropriate $1,100 to be raised in support of the Moore Free Library? We need a motion?
It's all moved.
It's been moved by Gary LaVorgna, the second? Julie LaVorgna has seconded Article 13. Discussion. Questions?
Yes.
Yes.
This obviously is on... Sorry. This obviously is on here because it's over $1,000. But if you look at the previous appropriation list, it was initially $700. In light that we have a new library, and she's here, if she'd like to speak to that, I think that would be very, very good, because it just went from $700 to $1,100. And I think she should speak to that.
And since Beckley is not a voter here, if there's no objection from the audience to have her speak, if there is an objection, we'll have to vote on it. But I think it would probably be helpful for us to know what we're voting on, why.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Up is on, right?
Up is on. Hello, hello? Well, I'll speak loudly. So thank you all.
You can come up here if you'd like to use this one.
I'm good. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, yeah. So I appreciate the opportunity to meet all of you, and that's really why I'm here tonight. I'll be doing a repeat of this at my own town meeting tomorrow in New Fane. My name's Beckley Goddett. I am a new librarian as of a year. And I just, first of all, want to welcome all of you to the library. Those of you who haven't met, not only do we have the library, but we also have the gallery. So please come. The boost in the request is an acknowledgement of some repairs that we had to do this past year. We had a major structural issue to our children's room, and we had to replace the floor. So we ended up with a $22,000 deficit coming out of this past year. So we are asking Brookline for $1,100. We are asking New Fane. Originally, we asked for 10. And we've negotiated with them so that the request on their budget for tomorrow will look like $1,000. But really, we're going after a much larger sum of ARPA money from New Fane, and that's what the conversation is. So the goal with the renovation this time around is our front porch and our handicap access with the ramp. And if you come by the library, I'm happy to show you how one of the pillars of the front porch is no longer attached to the deck. So we're really in need, and we've gotten some quotes and some good response from some construction people to help us with that. But come and visit at your library. It would be great to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Marie?
May I ask you? So Marie Tattersall again. I'm wearing two hats tonight. I'm a resident and taxpayer of Brookline, but I'm also on the board of the library. And we are so lucky to have a library in New Fane and Brookline. While it's physically in New Fane, but it serves all of us. Brookline has over 120 library cardholders that I know about. There might be more, but a lot of people use it. Take out books. I don't like books. I get them all from Overdrive or Libby and read them on my iPad because it's easier on my eyes as an old person. But there's just so many things available for the library. It's the only thing we ask for from the towns is a small appropriation. Other than that, we survive totally by contributions. That's my two cents.
Good, anybody else? Any questions for Beckley or... All right. Hearing none, let's go to a vote. Shall you appropriate $1,100 to be raised in support of the Mover Free Library? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and you've passed Article 13. Article 14, which is pretty much a boilerplate article, but I think we have to vote on it every year. Shall the voters vote to have its current taxes collected by its town treasurer? Need a motion and a second?
Move.
Who was that? Guy Tanza has moved Article 14. Is there a second to it?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been seconded. Discussion. Yes, Paul?
What are the advantages of this?
What was that?
What are the advantages of this?
Well, it's real easy. Rather than pay everything all at once, and some people find it easy to do it in installments, in quarterly installments, the same amount of money is still expended, but instead of making one big payment, say in November, you now have February and May. And at the end of that particular cycle, if you are late, then there's an 8% penalty. Whereas if you were late and it was only two payments, let's say the last payment was due in November, you would be assessed that 8% in November. So basically, it's like an installment plan, and it seems to work very well for the town of Brookline. It is a little more work for the treasurer, but in the light of what things are, the way things are today, I think having four payments is far better than two or one.
I missed your question, Paul? Maybe. This was an article that we were told a few years ago that we had to include every year. I don't know what preempted them, but... Yes, Gary?
Did we address this in Article 8?
The dates were addressed.
The dates were addressed, but not the collection by the town treasurer.
I think this specifies the individual, the position, who is collecting the taxes. And the other, Article 8, was the dates that they would be collected, not who would be due. I'm sorry, interjected with my own... Any other? Yes, Marie?
If there's something else, call the question.
Okay, since you've been recognized and you've asked for that, it's not debatable. And we were going there anyways, so that's good. Article 14 reads, shall the voters vote to have current taxes collected by the town treasurer? All in favor of such, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and you've passed Article 14. Article 15, shall the voters approve the appropriation of up to $18,000 for recycling costs for fiscal year 2024? Again, we need a motion and a second.
What was the number? I hear the number.
The number was $18,000 for recycling costs.
Move the question.
Okay, Guy Tanza has moved Article 15. Is there a second to it? Julie LaVorgna has seconded it. Discussion, questions?
I can just give a summary?
Sure, that's good.
We received during the year pros and cons of having that recycling center. We've gone down and cleaned up move outs. We've gone down and cleaned out equipment and things of that sort. However, we have noticed that even though there is littering in the town, it's in one area. So the recycling costs have gone down. We have budgeted $27,000 and $22,000, and now it's $18,000 for this year. But it is up to the voters to decide whether or not we will continue to do recycling by this vote. We have enough money to continue to the end of this year. But if you decide not to appropriate for the recycling, we'll have to sell those bins for scrap metal because we do own them, we bought them for a dollar, I think, or they were given to us. But anyway, that's where we're at. So it really is up to you all to decide whether or not we will continue to have the paper and model recycling.
One small point. I think it was in the budget for $23,000, and I asked the select board to reduce it to 18 because that is about what we spent. It was a little more than what we had spent last year. So we tried to reduce this. This is not my favorite article, but I use it, so I'd be a bit of a hypocrite. But, so I asked the select board to lower it down to $5,000. It was more in line of what the budget, with the actual expenditure for it was last year.
Dan Towler?
Just to respond to Mr. Mello's statement that it's hard to predict each year what this is going to cost.
That's true.
I'm sure no, but the costs of, you know, disposing and hauling recyclables and trash fluctuates fairly rapidly, dramatically.
And Dan, you're speaking as a representative to the Waste District, correct?
Yeah, I am the town's representative to the Wyndham Solid Waste Management District, which runs the transportation network. So if you have any questions about what should go in a container and what shouldn't, I guess I'm the one to ask. My email is more or less public information. Call me or look for me on the street.
Obviously, there are some in town who have yet to figure that out.
Yes, there are.
Yes, Gwen?
Gwen Tanza. My concern is if we don't approve the recycle bin and they take it away, that place is so used to having a recycle bin there, it's going to end up a garbage dump. And that's my concern if it's not approved going forward.
Not only that, we live on Ellenware Road, and the trash...
Bruce?
I agree with everything those three people said, but I just want to make one small point. It's not a pat on the back to select, but it's just an example of how we analyze this budget. And when we saw something that was a little askance, a little bit more than it should be, we tried to cut it long. So what Dan said about the recycling costs, yes, we can't be sure what the costs are actually going to be for the next fiscal year, but we try to bring it more in line, the next budget into what was actually spent last year. Actually, it was a little bit more than what we spent last year, if I remember right. I think it was 15,000 or 16,000. So I asked the board to cut it down from 23 to 18, and that was my reasoning behind it.
Okay. Any other comments? Go ahead.
For those of you who are wondering what it actually cost you for this budget, if you look on your tax bill, on the left-hand side of the panel there, it'll show recycling. And it's anywhere from $2 to $28 per person for a year. To me, it's a real good value because if you didn't have those recycling bins, you'd have to go into Brattleboro, you'd have to travel there. I find that recycling bins, except for that one or two people, or 4% or 5% of people that don't adhere to the rules, I think it's a good deal for the town. Well, I think we're one of the last few towns that have that bin, but we own the bins. And Mark, again, he's policing the area, making sure that if there is some unsightly dumping there, that it's taken care of right away. To me, I think it's a real good value for our town.
Okay. Anybody else? Let's take it to a vote then. Article 15, we read, the voters... Oops, I'm losing it. Can I ask for a larger font next year? This is really hard to see. Go for an extra page. Shall the voters approve the appropriation of up to $18,000 for recycling costs for the fiscal year 2024? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. As is your right, Peggy. The ayes?
David?
Yes.
Every time I go up there, and I live right close, it is totally cold, and I know people are coming in the middle of the night from other towns and emptying, and I have another neighbor that's telling me the same thing.
Could be. Could be. Well, the ayes have it on the vote, so we have passed Article 15. I've noticed, though, the weekends are good. Friday, get there on Friday or Thursday, it's pretty good. If you try to get there on Monday, forget it.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, no.
Anyways, that's neither here nor there. Article 16, we need to elect one West River Modified Union Education District School Director who is a resident of Brookline for a three-year term. Currently, that person is sitting in the back of the room, the current occupant of that seat, Leigh Anne Jilson. So a nomination would be in order.
I nominate Leigh Anne again.
Okay. Leigh Anne, are you still interested?
Yes.
Okay. Leigh Anne Jilson has been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion for the town clerk to cast one ballot in favor of Leigh Anne Jilson.
It's been moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. The town clerk cast one ballot for Leigh Anne Jilson for the position of school director. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and on behalf of the town, Leigh Anne, thank you. Article 17, is a discussion for other business which shall not be used for taking binding municipal action, and the moderator shall sow root under this article. No binding action may be taken. It is a place, though, for people if you want to make known some of your feelings. I've never known the select board to sit up here and not hear what you're saying, so this is your opportunity to bring up whatever.
Yes? I'd like to say something. At this point, I really feel it's important that our road commissioner, I'm sorry, our road foreman supervisor, rather, Mark, this is the only town that I know of that doesn't have a piece of equipment for the town to use for emergencies, for repairs, or anything else. I think I would like to see the select board move in the direction of financing a piece of equipment, an excavator, trac excavator, whatever it is, so that our town doesn't have to depend on outside vendors. Not that our outside vendors are bad. Archie Clark, Sam Bourne, everybody, they've been great, but when Mark has to respond immediately, it's hard sometimes to have that done immediately. And I think for a person who doesn't have anything, not even a wheelbarrow to work with, I think it's important that the town consider, or the select board consider appropriating some funding toward the purchase of a piece of equipment for the town garage.
We have it. It's already in the works. Anybody else? Considerations in the works. Nothing else? We contain crap.
Well, I'm just a little curious when you say it's already in the works.
I got to ask for that. I meant the consideration of it.
But it's just been in the works for many years.
That's true.
As we all are quite aware.
Actually...
Just hope nothing happens without reading until the next town meeting, at the very least, and being voted on again.
Actually, back in 2018 in that town warning, there was an article for the purchase of an excavator at the cost of approximately $94,000, which would have been paid off this year. We need to put it in a warning before the select board, before the town, in a town meeting when you're using taxpayer funds. However, the town of Brookline has received funds from the federal government called ARPA, American Rescue... AR, American Rescue...
Planning Act.
Planning Act. And it has to do with COVID-19 funds. And we received approximately, a couple cents or whatever, shy of $300 per resident. So it came out to approximately $153,000 of ARPA money. This cannot be used. We tried, we sought to, we tried to see if it could be used to reduce the tax burden. That is, one of the few things that the ARPA money cannot be used for is to reduce the tax burden. However, there are 57 other items that the ARPA money can be used for, including the purchase of equipment. Right now, we are in contact with Katie Buckley, the ARPA consultant for Vermont League of Cities and Towns. We have posed the questions to the legal attorneys there and shared our purchase policy, and we are awaiting confirmation, but I do believe we should be able to make, to be able to apply some of the ARPA funds for that purchase. We are also researching the Vermont Bond Bank to see, which would be a 2%...
Oh, is it changed?
I'm going to pass it on for a second to somebody else, but when he says that we're in consideration, we realize we're woefully unprepared for emergencies. You know, I have to call Howard Osgood to go move rocks out of Ellaware Road when vandals block the road, or we have to call Tom Bloom to move a tree, or Archie, you know, just to close up. There's a lot of things that can be done by one person, and Mark is willing to spend that time. But Stan, you wanted to have, you have some facts and figures you wanted to share?
Yeah, there is a division of the Vermont Treasurer's Department that deals with municipal loans for heavy equipment. The details are such that we can't borrow over 110,000. The rate of interest is 2%, up to a maximum of five years. And so we've looked at that as one option. We've looked at ARPA as a potential purchase. We have made efforts to log on the internet and basically check every used equipment, heavy equipment dealer in New York, Connecticut, Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Massachusetts, if I haven't mentioned it. The size of the equipment that we need, I believe, if Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, is between gross vehicle weight of 25,000 and 50,000 pounds. Is that correct?
I'd say 18,000 to 25,000.
18,000 to 25,000. And those are hard to find. I created a list a couple of weekends ago of, I think, 12,000. And when I gave it to Mark, and I don't know if I emailed Archie Uwe a copy of it as well, it turned out that they're so large, that's why they're on the market. The towns don't want to deal with them. If you're trying to clean a culvert or do something over on the right side of the road, the vehicle's parked on the left side, and you can't let traffic through. So we're trying to put a pine needle thread through a sewing needle to get one that is reasonable, hopefully used, because new can be up to 265,000. And we just haven't had an awful lot of luck. It would be, in trying to figure out this as to how much it would save the town, we would then need to factor in rental rates. I think last year, we paid $16,000 to rent equipment for the time that we had it, which allowed Mark to do a tremendous amount of work for the short time that he had it. It looks like to do a purchase of a piece of equipment like that would put us in the ballpark of what our expenses are currently. It's not going to hurt us. It's not going to really improve us in terms of saving great sums of money. Where we save money in one aspect, we end up spending it somewhere else, and it kind of washes out. So we are looking at options, keeping track. We've even called the Treasurer's Office in Vermont and said, can we get pre-approved? If we find a piece of equipment that we want, can we have approval so we can tell the dealer, here's your check in five days? And they won't do that. It takes about two months after we submit an application, and it's due two times of the year, April 1st and October 1st. So basically, by June 1st and December 1st, we'll get our answer after about 60 days. So it's frustrating. We can't do that. The only option is if we get a dealer to agree to entertain the option, and then they withdraw from it, the Treasurer's Department in Vermont will allow that application to hang, so we can possibly get another dealer and another piece of equipment. But it's an odd, it's not an easy one to do. There are options. ARPA would be a great way, if we could, to spend that money for a piece of the used equipment. And so when Bruce says we've got things in the process, we don't have a specific piece of equipment. We're looking at options that would make it affordable, that wouldn't screw up our tax rate, and at the same time, provide Mark with the ability to serve you in an emergency situation, or any situation, as quickly as is possible. And so we know Mark, he's had the same piece of machinery that we're looking for for the past two years, and he's, he has nothing but praise for it. I think Archie, he might have talked with you about it, and I think Ward's Borough's got it. Stratton has bought the same piece of equipment, and there are other towns that realize the value of that machine. And if I'm not mistaken, I think, did Newthing swap their large machine in for a smaller one as well? Yes, Archie Sheik has said yes. So we know what we're after, and just bear with us. We're trying to do it as cheaply as we can. The loan rate for the municipal heavy equipment loan, which is through the Treasurer's Department, has only had a rate of 2%. So, but it do require a 25% down payment, so that's what the ARPA...
That was the ARPA money.
That was, yeah. So the ARPA money, the select board, because it's non-taxpayer's money in theory, can make the decision to purchase a piece of equipment without citizen approval. And I think it's a good idea that Guy brought it up because it's something that probably we should be talking about in terms of, how do you feel about that? Would you like us to proceed on, or are we wasting our time, knowing that financially, it's, you know, it's going to depend? You know, some people that operate that equipment are getting $165 an hour. That Mark is not getting that. I'm sorry to Mark Sayo. So there's savings there, but then the increase in hours, that having that equipment, you know, offsets to some extent the savings. I hope that answers some of your concerns and questions.
Sue? And then Mark.
Yes, just a quick question. If you own this piece of equipment, where does it get parked? Where does it live? And are there...
Town garage.
Town garage. Where is the... I'm sorry.
Nine hundred and fifty Book Road.
Nine hundred and fifty Book Road. Nine hundred and fifty Book Road. Nine hundred and fifty Book Road. Nine hundred and fifty Book Road.
I think the moderator can give you a very good description of where it is. Right across from the pond.
Come on over to my house, I'll give you a tour. It's a part of the job that they don't mention. Mark, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I'm Mark, every road guy. So basically, I monitor the roads year-round, a little less in the winter when Archie's plowing. If there's an incident, Archie will call on me to go and check on a tree or something that arises. But basically, if I'm out there working on the roads, I monitor every culvert in town. I think we're over 300 culverts, and, you know, they fill in every rainstorm. You get silt that flows down, or gravel off the road, or leaves, and I can only do so much with a shovel and a bucket. But, you know, I use, the town owns a grader, and I keep the roads scraped as needed. And we usually, for years, they put the roadside mowing out for bid, and we'd take the low bid, and that grew over years money-wise. And so then, there's a need for something to clean culvert inlets and outlets and do other work in town. If a tree comes down, you could use it to push a tree around. So basically, a machine that would be very helpful to the town is a multipurpose tool, something that can travel on the road at a fair speed to be efficient. And so I'm thinking a medium-sized machine would be efficient. If you buy something too small, that's not really rated for the job, it's going to take longer, and it's, you know, if it's too big, you're breaking stuff, and it's oversized. So a medium-sized machine, multipurpose, and when I say multipurpose, the one that we have rented in the past has capabilities of putting a mower attachment on it. So not only does it dig and install culverts, remove culverts, clean culverts, you can turn it into a mowing machine, and it'll reach over the banks. So that's kind of what we're looking at, and used would be fine if we can find a used one to fit the town's budget, not looking to break the town. But it's just, I keep a notebook in my shirt pocket, and I write notes every time I'm out on the roads, and if I see a plugged culvert, again, I can only do so much with a shovel, and, you know, a digging machine, a mowing machine would benefit the town. Our rental fees that we pay back every summer, if you add them up over a five-year period of time, you could have owned that machine rather than rented. And when it, if it was here in town, it would be available undercover, you know, in a stored building where it's protected and maintained, and I think it would benefit the town greatly.
Use taxpayers have an opportunity here to weigh in on this, even though anything we would vote on would be non-binding, but if you'd like to send a message to the select board in terms of whether to purchase such a piece of equipment or not, we can do that at this point, again, understanding that it's not a binding decision upon the select board. If there's desire for this, then somebody can frame a motion. It looks like maybe Doug's.
I'd just like to make another comment that, you know, several years ago, whenever Doug said, we voted against this. You know, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I think, you know, we should have a piece of equipment, but we voted against it. There was a working group that put together some data for the then-select board, and it was decided not to pursue it. And I think before you go out and buy a machine, whether we're taking grant money to pay the down payment on it or not, it's something that should be brought to the taxpayers.
Doug, where is that data that you amassed? Doug, where is that data that you amassed? Because I've, I had asked others, and I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I don't have the final report. I was on the working group for that, and Joseph, and Archie, and who else was with us?
Mark.
Mark, Mark was involved. Guy, you were on for a little while anyway? Yeah, so there were several of us, but I don't know what happened with the report from that.
Do you recall the main concept as to why it was not amicable to follow up on?
I may have some of that information. The primary reason we decided not to move forward with it is something that you already alluded to, is that there's really not a significant cost benefit to the town. It could go either way. We could save a little bit of money, we also could lose a large amount of money. It didn't really seem like there was a significant cost savings to the town. Because there's not, it's not simply, buying a several hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment is not a one-time cost. It is, you know, it's an investment, and it can go south. It is renting, if we get all our jobs done renting the piece of equipment, that's, you know, got the insurance, the maintenance of the vehicle, everything all bundled up into that one cost, whereas if you're owning it for many years, you have to cover the maintenance and all sorts of different costs with that. So when you bundle it all together, it's not really a significant cost savings one way or the other.
Yes, of course. But we're not looking at a couple hundred thousand. Excuse me if you can't hear me, we're not looking at a couple hundred, we're not looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars, nowhere near it.
Well, that's not necessarily true.
Yes, it is.
What we're looking at, what does it go for? Like 100?
100, 125. Do I have that right, Mark? Am I close on that?
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking used, you can find them anywhere from 80 to 125.
And it's affordable.
You know, the thing about buying used is, as you know, if you go out to buy something, there's no guarantee it's going to be there by the time you get your funding together. If somebody comes along ahead of you, your deal goes away real quick. So it's hard to shop around not knowing, you know, how much you're going to spend. So that would be a definite good point to know what you're going to spend before you're looking. But, you know, there's risk out there, and the town owns one piece of equipment, a grader, they've owned it since way before I came on town.
1976.
By centennial purchase.
I've worked for the town for 16 years, and run the same machine, and it serves the town well. And I don't know what they gave for it back then, but it's, I'm sure they've got their money's worth out, but it was used when they got it.
Yes, Mary.
Well, if I understand it, it's not necessarily just a question of the dollars and cents, but also, if I'm hearing it correctly, it's also a question of efficacy and efficiency. How quickly can it be gotten and to respond to a tree in the road? Is that right? For example?
Yeah, there's a lot of convenience to owning the machine, so it's there when needed. Like a plugged culvert, one heavy rainstorm, if one culvert should plug, it'll take the road out there down to the next culvert, and that's costly to the town. I mean, yeah, we can call around and see who's available to bring a machine in, but it would be very convenient to have something on-site for an emergency.
And possibly a cost savings, because that would prevent further damage.
Yes, right.
David Jones.
Yeah, just to echo that, another thing that Mark has run into before, that towns run into, when we do roadside mowing in the summer, we can't necessarily get a piece of equipment at the time to do it optimally, to keep the invasive stuff down. If we owned a piece of equipment with a mower, Mark could very efficiently, at the right times of year, do the roadside mowing to much better control the invasive stuff along the roadside.
And we're paying $25,000 to $30,000 a year just to cut our grass. That's how, that's how the prices have escalated, and with the invasive species, it should be done twice a year, so we can minimize that portion of road that people walk along. It's a win-win situation in my ideas, and, but I just wanted to reinforce my thinking and have the select board explain what they were thinking, so that, is it an expense? Yes. And to own a vehicle is expensive, yes, there's insurance and maintenance, but prices are escalating, as we all know, and that piece of equipment that was $85,000 two or three years ago was probably $120,000. And to cut grass at $15,000 to $20,000 is now $30,000. So it's just, it's just foolish for the town, in my opinion, not to own a piece of equipment and dictate when they want to use it and what they need to use it for. And if you have a piece of equipment, believe me, Mark will find a use for it all year long, or probably 10 months out of the year.
From my view here at 30,000 feet, and looking down on this, I would recommend that the board come up with some dollar figure that you want the town to spend on this. I mean, it sounds like you are hampered, if something comes on the market, you are hampered by not having the funds you needed in order to make the purchase at the time, you may lose it to somebody else. And on the other hand, people here have expressed some views pro and con, that perhaps this should be voted on, to give you the authorization you need to do something like that, should the opportunity arise. You would have the backing or not of the voters, you'll at least find out.
The statute is very clear, the town select board has the authority to purchase a machine and finance it for five years, and put the 20% down. That's.
I'm not saying they don't have the authority, I'm saying to have the approval of the town to do something is a nice thing to have. Or if you find out that the town does not want you going down this road, then that's less work that the three of you have to do. So that just, again, yes.
I support that, those comments, certainly. This is the non-binding portion of the meeting tonight, so your input is helpful. I don't know if you'll find this helpful or not, but as a part of looking at the remuneration that we pay Mark for his services, and finding out how competitive we are with other towns in the county, fall ago, I looked at the closest seven towns in population to our town. They were Athens, Brookline, of course, Grafton, Halifax, Nufane, Townsend, and Wyndham. Athens has got 442 citizens, we have 530. They've got, Athens, that is, 17.89 miles in roads, we've got 16.86. They spend on an annual basis on their roads $170,000. We spend 117. They have two guys, two pieces of equipment, no one else is doing what we're doing. I don't like to do anything because someone else is doing something, but when I look at the pieces of this large picture, it would seem to make sense that it is something that you seriously ought to consider, so that we find out what the community, as a majority or whole, feels about the issue.
Hold a question on this. I would like to make a suggestion. I would like to get Mark to talk to you, but I would like to get a non-binding vote on looking at purchasing a piece of equipment for the town. And I would also say that, using the email listserv, which Julie, thank you so much for doing it, I find it very helpful to communicate with the residents, that, I know I put out agendas on the website, but when we come up to talking about, if it comes up to a select board meeting, if it comes to the agenda, I could shoot out an email saying, Wednesday's meeting, this is going to be discussed, if you wanted to join in at that time. But I do want to be, you know, transparent for what we're doing, and hopefully, again, if we could use government, federal funding that is available this year for us, you know, we have until 2025 to spend it, but.
2024 to dedicate it, and 2026, both years, December 31st, to make those statements.
Mark, you want to?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add just one more thing. All these other towns, they have a program where they upgrade their equipment, like every five years, five, eight years on a piece of machinery. They buy a truck, and it's a cycle, and they're always upgrading. Brookline's bought one grader in 20 years, so I know it's a risk to buy a machine, a second-hand, you don't know what you get most times, you visit tires and walk around and see how painted it is and stuff, but there's always the option, if you get something and it's not what you're liking, it's not doing the job, you can sell it or trade it. There's always those options.
Maybe we could just do it. Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to call a question.
Yeah, we don't really have a question out here at the moment, but. But we could, I suppose, what we could do here to give the board some ideas, just a show of hands of how many people might be interested in you guys pursuing this.
Perfect.
And just, you know, a show of hands, if you're interested in the town looking at this, raise your hand. Good. Does that give you enough?
To continue to work, and again, if you decide that you'd like to get on the select board and head this program.
Really?
Talk to next week's meeting, we all appoint you.
Remember that, one week vacation. Paul, you want to?
We've, at Dutton's, have been looking at purchasing new equipment, because we have a fleet of tractors, and it's a hell of a tough time to be out buying a new piece of equipment. I think in the last three years, price of new equipment, if they're available, is like doubled. Used equipment, overpriced, scary time to buy. I hope the town, I'd like the idea as a significant taxpayer, to have a select board, maybe involve another committee that reviews this. And if you get that, what you call COVID money, is it fair to call this?
COVID money, ARPA, American Rescue Plan, we have it, we received it, it is in our account.
So that's a real good way, I would be, that sounds better for me, but.
We're not looking at increasing the tax burden.
I just want some of those folks that are not aware of the difficult times out there buying new equipment, just, it's very significant. Four years ago, a farmer like me could go out and buy a tractor like that, easy and beautiful piece of equipment. And just a 100 horsepower tractor, John Deere, that's a $100,000 bill. This business of getting a piece of equipment, a good one, for less than $200,000, you're going to get a reality check when you go out there and do shop. The number's not going to be 125,000, it's going to be 200,000. And as a significant taxpayer, I hope that you, you know, folks, if you can get that COVID money, so to speak, that sounds good to me, but I don't dare talk because I don't know enough about this. And I hope that you consult and make a lot of us folks aware of what's going on.
Absolutely, and I try to communicate with that listserv, put out that information, and I will continue to do that, and, you know, identify the meetings that these things would be discussed in, under the open meeting law.
Okay, thank you. Stan?
Yeah, Paul just said today what Archie said that same time ago, four or five years ago, there were a lot of them, and they're inexpensive. But when, if I can just offer something to sort of put that in perspective, that list that I derived two weekends ago, I think there were 11 or 12 pieces of equipment, they were used. The oldest was a 2001 Cat Orbital Excavator. Because of its age, it had a lot of hours, we're talking, I think it was $32,000. The highest one was a 2012, again, a Cat, and it was $89,000. So there is equipment out there, it is within a sense of reason, it's unfortunate that it doesn't quite fit our model of what we need. And again, we don't have any desire to buy a piece of brand-new equipment to put you under that.
I'd like to make a point, we adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn on the floor, is there a second to that?
No.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No suposte? The ayes have it.